Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. Time is 6:59. If you'd all please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank SCTV for recording these proceedings. It's always good to be able to go back and review a meeting if we have to. Second item on the agenda after the Pledge of Allegiance is roll call. Please indicate your presence by saying here. Polly Bem?
Here.
Robert Kulikowski?
Here.
Aaron Levitt Smith?
Here.
Ron LaChandra? Absent. Alan Niedel?
Here.
William Rice? Here. Elizabeth Byrd?
Here.
Mark Drake? Absent. Gary Lungarini? Absent. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We have five regular members in attendance. Elizabeth, I'd like to have you join us from the alternate to a full member for tonight. Thank you. Okay, next, approval of the minutes. Mr. Kulikowski, can you take us through those?
Okay. Hopefully, everybody read and looked over the minutes of the September 26, 2017, regular meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission at the Simsbury Town offices. Any additions, changes to page 1? Page 2? Page 3?
Move to accept the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I voted aye as well, so it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, on to old business. We have no public hearings and no open applications. For new business, we have no receipt of new applications, but we have a CGS 8-3A referral from the zoning commission, or they've asked for a referral from us regarding zoning commission application number 17-42 of Matthew Erdman and John Aljovicki, Keller Williams Farmington Valley Agents, for a text amendment to Article 10, Section C, Point 1, Point B of the town of Simsbury Regulations Regarding Real Estate Signage. This is continued from our September 26 meeting. At that point, if you remember, commissioners, we felt that we wanted to review the proposed text amendment a little bit more and review it in the context of how it may be in conflict or in agreement with the 2007 Plan of Conservation and Development. So with that said, I'll open up discussion for many commissioners.
I have a question about the proposed changes.
Yeah.
So I just...
Let me just, this is the one where the proposed text amendment is looking to increase the number of signs that can be used for houses for sale or probably apartments for rent, so real estate signs. Does everyone remember this, the content of this? Okay, go ahead, Eric, sorry.
So, I just wanted to clarify because it's around the signage on the public property and public right-of-way. And I was just a little confused as, by reading this, they could put up any amount of signs on any public right-of-way, correct? Not just ones around the house? Didn't...
No, I think...
So that's what, I was confused by the way this was worded.
You read the terminology, appears they're asked, right now, they're allowed to have one sign.
Right, on the...
Their proposal would allow for two signs on the property and additional off-site signage directing you to that home for an open house or other event, and that's for a three-day time period.
Okay.
Those signs could be located in the public right-of-way.
And there's no restriction on how many of those could go up?
No, they did. They were restricting those. I believe it's 3.
It says not more than one sign for each premises shall be displayed on any one street section, intersection. So does that mean one per intersection?
Well, right there, that's one of 10 intersections.
To your point, could you have them starting in Grand B leading all the way to a property in the southwest portion of...
You could.
You know, West Mountain Road.
That's my question, because that's how I led that. There was no...
It does not clearly determine whether you could or could not do that. I think one could argue, as long as I don't have more than one sign per intersection...
Correct.
I can have a sign at...
Several. That's what I was trying... Okay, so I did read that correctly, because I was like, even though it says they're limiting it to one, on the premises, I get that, but any street intersection, but you could have 10, like you said, so that's why I was clarifying. Right, or more, but one per intersection. Of course, it is time limited.
One per intersection per house for sale, not one per intersection per realtor.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, so you could have multiple signs at that intersection if that realtor has more than one...
Or if there are more than one home for sale.
Right, or more than one open house. So that's, okay, so I thank you for that. That's how I interpreted that, but I just wanted to be sure I was reading that.
So you could be looking at this way to the open house, this way to the open house?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Versus looking at Zillow and putting the street address in and putting it in your phone.
And can I clarify? There's signs that go up all the time with arrows and open houses that say down this way? Yeah?
Again, our regulations state that one sign per, and it's ambele for sale, that's what you are allowed.
But by practice, it's not like...
The majority of the realtors in Simsbury have been following the requirements that are contained in the regulations. There may be others who are not. You know, we don't have staff here on Saturday or Sunday, but in most instances, all the realtors in the community are letting staff know that there is potential abuse on the weekends.
So if I'm a homeowner and I see a bunch of signs cluttering up the side of the road, not in compliance with town regulations, can I call the police department, register a complaint? Would they do anything?
They can register a complaint with the zoning department, but the police will not remove a sign that's in violation. District 4 from the Department of Transportation has been known to remove signs throughout the weekend, on the weekends, if they're in the state right-of-way and they happen to see them. So a lot of the, you know, a lot of our major intersections in town have very generous state right-of-ways.
Just to finish that, so then if I reported it to the zoning board, would they do some sort of penalty, a fine, or with the realtor?
In most instances, we would contact the realtor, we would write a letter to that realtor. Noncompliance can result in a fine of $150 per day per violation. So if you put three signs out Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that would be 3 times 3, which is 9 times $150. We have written letters to realtors in the past. We have also written letters to the Board of Realtors with regards to the signage rules in the town of Simsbury.
So we move from a situation where many, I don't know if it's most realtors follow the rules. This would allow nobody to follow the current rules, just the new ones.
I think potentially it's a reaction to, I'm following the rules, but others aren't. So instead of seeking compliance across the board, let's potentially relax the regulations. But, you know, then how do you enforce a new code? You know, again, if someone's going to abuse the code that you have, they're going to do it with a new code.
Sure.
Yeah, it feels like the tip I was talking about.
There's a couple of points in the POCD that I think are relevant. First, I think that there's a weak case to be made for economic development in the sense that someone may feel that improved signage or advertising may lead to faster house sales. I don't know. I think it's a weak argument. I do think that the impact that the multitude of signs could have on the community character really outweighs any potential economic development that may be derived by the proposed text amendment.
I think it's clearly a character issue.
You know...
The signs, I just want to stop the second. Signs, I understand, are among the most frequent complaints to the zoning enforcement officer. It's a very common complaint. This isn't going to change that when I get worse. I'm sorry.
Do you want to add that, Alan?
I've been told that.
I just want to say that there's really two parts to this. And I think that what we're all objecting to is the concept of our intersections being cluttered with multiple signs to open houses, but I think there is a genuine, for the first part of the change, having a property that borders two roads to have a sign on each facing road, I don't see a problem with that, and I can see why that's confusing. I know I've gone to events where I didn't realize that the information was on the other side and circled around or gave up, and it just didn't dawn on me that there was another side to look at. So it seems to me that just one sign per street that the property faces is not necessarily going to be detrimental to the character.
We have to look at what was submitted, and that wasn't what was submitted.
Oh, no, that was, that's part of what was submitted. There's two parts. So, I mean, are we, do we summarily reject everything, or are we permitted to say the first part is agreeable?
No, they're looking for our opinion, a referral. So, yeah, we can say whatever we want.
I'd like to have the commissioners consider that concept, then. The first part does not seem to be unreasonable.
I'd like to respond to that. Is that okay? If your house is on a corner, so you're facing two different streets, and you put a sign catycornered on the corner, people driving both roads will see the sign. So I don't know that it's necessary to have two separate signs.
Well, it could be, I mean, I can envision all sorts of scenarios where you can't do that, where there's a mass of shrubbery, for example, in the corner.
I also have a question. This refers to time, but the current language that they quote has no reference to time. So it's saying Friday to sundown on Sundays, or sun at sundown on the day the workers open house. So is there currently a restriction on time in the zoning law? Would this make it more restrictive?
We only allow one sign per property if that property is for sale, so there, in essence, is no need to restrict a timeframe, so long as that property, you know, you can have that sign so long as your property is being offered for sale.
But this is for the open house, with a specific date?
Open house signs are not allowed.
But they're not?
Under the current regulations.
Wow. What your housing...
Yeah, I see.
Well, not happening by all.
No, but they're happening.
If there was total for-sale sign, substitute an open house sign.
But it has to be on that property.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I see this as a, as a character issue for the, for the town of Simsbury, not meeting that by having signs all over the place. Some communities are going to, signs are just, just overbearing that you just see signs everywhere. I know that one adjoining community has controls on for-sale signs that they're a lot smaller than the typical for-sale sign. So it's not unreasonable to say that we in Simsbury are being different than other towns, because other towns do restrict the for-sale signs as it is. I'm also not, not in favor of having people write our regulations and codes. So if, my referral to the, to the zoning commission would be that if they, if they choose to take this up, that they review the entire code and make changes in their own vernacular versus someone that is kind of off the street. So I'm not in favor of sending a referral back to them that is in a positive manner.
Would anyone like to form a motion?
I didn't like the fact that this was unwanted, the signage. And I see, I saw it as a character issue. You could end up with signs all over, so...
I'll make a motion that the, the referral, let's see here, let's see, who's the number? 17-42 from the zoning commission does not meet the character portions of the current POCD, and that we are sending a negative referral back to them.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Ali, we did hear, I don't think there was sufficient support.
Well, and again, if we're taking it as the whole, I'd have to agree with the motion, again, the whole.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the negative referral? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? The motion for the negative referral passes unanimously. Good. Okay, next on the agenda, let's see. Would anyone have an objection if I went to General Commission Business B? I see we have representation, okay, and as opposed to A. Any crowd in there?
Let's let the poor guy get one.
Yep, so let's take up the 120 East Wheaton Street Release of Conservation Restriction.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, but I'm happy to entertain any questions more expansive of what I said. Simply, back in 2013, the commission took this up, and the proposal was that this conservation easement would be granted, this conservation restriction would be granted on this piece of property, but anticipating that the adjacent property would be given to the land trust or, it says, town of Simsbury. I'm not sure what all the possibilities were. So what the easement literally says is that it's void if the grant to the land trust is made for more than 40 acres. What happened is they granted 75 acres to the land trust, so I believe that the condition has been fulfilled, and I believe that the conservation restriction should, should be void as the agreement says. But what it says is that this commission should approve the release. So I've drafted a release, it's included in the package, and I'm seeking your approval of that, which would then be presented to a town official for signature.
I think there was a time limitation as well?
Five years.
And that conveyance, or it was occurred in 2015, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it was like two, I think that's right. It was like two years.
So, everyone understand the situation? Okay, I think so.
I have a question. By easement, are we referring to open land? Or easement for possible road, or...
It was a conservation...
Conservation, I think it's literally called a restriction. On this lot, there's just a portion, this is a big lot, 11 acres, and there's just a portion that's mapped off that is restricted by a conservation easement, so you can't cut the trees, you can't do anything with it.
And, but the intent was that it was part of some type of open space during that subdivision.
Right. I think, I think the concept was, if you took all the land owned by the Ellsworths at the time, which was a substantial amount of land, and you developed the upper part, that this lower part would be restricted, but that if the upper part, in fact, became permanent open space, as it has, then this, this lot would be free of a restriction. That was the concept. So this is 3, 3 and 1/2 acres on my client's lot, but now there's 75 acres of land trust land immediately adjacent to my client's lot.
So this is not conservation because of wet land or anything like that?
I don't believe so. I believe it was just for open spaces.
And is it located, what part of the parcel? I'm trying to envision this. You've got the mountain in the back, you've got Wheaton Street. Is it along the road? Is it behind the property, under the hill?
You'd have to picture the way they subdivided it. The lower parcel, so it's closer to the road than land trust. Land trust has, has a, has a section going in at the north side of its property off East Wheaton. And the driveway which serves my client's and neighbor's property also comes off of East Wheaton. My client's property is in, if you picture that, it's like the northeast corner of that area. But between my client's property and East Wheaton Street are three lots that have not yet been sold, but three lots that are for sale. This easement was right adjacent to those three lots. So my client's driveway goes up and around this easement to my client's house.
So this would eventually be developed?
I don't, don't think it would.
It'll be part of that contiguous 11-acre...
It's an 11-acre lot, and there's, you know, the subdivision was to cut out the three lots below that.
The, the area that is currently restricted, does it have any walking paths, or is it access to the land trust area?
Certainly no access at all, because it would be landlocked, if you will, by the unrestricted part of my client's property. I have never noticed any trails there, but I guess I can't tell you for certain that there isn't. But this would provide no access, because it's bordered on the one side by the three lots on the street, and then on all other sides, it's bordered by the non-restricted part of my client's lot. The driveway goes up around one side, and the other side, there isn't much, but it does not connect. This easement does not connect with the land trust property.
Okay, I guess that was my question.
So my, my recollection of this subdivision, that was carved out, add-in, we put that in because there was some question with the land trust, how much land they were going to get, and it was a little less than we wanted, so we carved out this easement that's essentially behind the three lots, between there and, and Mr. Ellsworth's property, and it's actually on a slope hill that goes up, and the driveway comes around. So my recollection is, is we carved this out because there wasn't enough for the subdivision that we wanted to do. Now that the locusts have come in and taken a larger, larger portion for protected property, you want to release this, I understand.
That's true.
So that, that helped the folks that were on the board when this subdivision happened. So this, this here is landlocked, and it's actually quite sloped.
So this will just provide open land adjacent to the 11 existing acres not to be subdivided or developed?
It's part of the 11-acre lot.
Correct.
Yeah. I couldn't, I've never studied the issue of whether this could be further subdivided, but I can tell you that this area has already been subdivided, so if there, if there were any more subdivision up in that area, then it would have to come back to you. Yeah, this, as it's used now, I mean, I can certainly assure you what my client's intention's on. As it's used now, this is an 11-acre residential property. That's all he wants to do with it.
So, Mr. Rabbit, any comments from staff?
If you were to entertain a motion, and you were to word that motion in a favorable manner, some suggested language would be a motion to allow the release of the conservation easement as referenced in the Timothy E. Ellsworth subdivision, since more than 40 acres of adjacent land has been deeded to the Simsbury Land Trust, which ought, would then authorize you to release the 2.68 acre conservation easement.
I'm not sure I would repeat that.
Do we need to make a reference to the previous Planning Commission requirement in our motion?
The requirement associated with the original approval was you either keep the easement in effect, or the Ellsworth family deed more than 40 acres to the Simsbury Land Trust. Since the Simsbury Land Trust received more than 40 acres from the Ellsworth, that allows the present commission to release that easement. You know, they, they set this up, I think, for a very simple administrative process upon the dedication of that land to the trust. So again, any motion that you would make, in essence, motion to allow the release of the conservation easement as referenced in the Timothy E. Ellsworth subdivision, since more than 40 acres of adjacent land was deeded to the Simsbury Land Trust within the five years stipulated in the original approval.
Do you have that recorded?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to move...
I was going to take a shot at that.
I'd like to move that we adopt that motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think that this, you know, there's no question that the conditions have been satisfied, and it was a good decision to release it.
Deal's a deal.
I'd also like to say that I'm not only a member of the Simsbury Land Trust, but it was this property that got me into being the fundraiser to acquire it, and since then I've spent a lot of time on that property. It's a generous gift. It connects all of Simsbury to the very top ridge of the Matcom Trail, which we did not have public Simsbury land to do before that. So it's a very generous and greatly appreciated gift.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the, the motion to, to release the conservation restriction? And I think we can do it, Mr. Rabbit, in accordance with the submitted...
I'm sure council will review what council has provided for you.
Okay.
My understanding is, is that Attorney DePresenzo has looked at it.
Okay, so we'll just have...
Certainly I'll coordinate with him. I'll coordinate with him to make sure he does.
Okay, we'll just be subject to the town attorney's approval of the submitted release. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're going to go back to General Commission Business A. 18 Shingle Mill Road, West Simsbury, request for clarification of durable all-weather service. When the subdivision was approved, there was certain terminology used in the, the agreement that has been brought into question specifically with the term durable all-weather service. So here we have a situation where a driveway has been constructed with, I'm going to say crushed stone. It's, I drove by a couple of times to take a look at it, and it's a steep driveway off of Shingle Mill Road. When I looked at it, it didn't look exactly like the picture that the applicant, I'll call him the applicant, submitted. It looked like there was some rust, and I'm not sure how that's actually dealt with in the winter. But in any, in any event, we do have a letter from the current town engineer, Mr. Jeff Shea. I think, commissioners, do you have that in your possession? So if you haven't read it, just take a minute to, to read through it. So in here, Mr. Shea's pretty clear that, in his opinion, and taken into consideration the recommendation about the former town engineer and the site conditions, that Mr. Shea would agree that in consideration of the steep topography and the slope of the proposed common driveway, that a bituminous concrete common driveway and hammerhead turnaround should be required.
Plus some storm drainage improvements.
Yep. Okay, so...
If, if there's development of the remaining lots. Didn't the original engineer report say it would be acceptable to use sharpened stone or whatever that phrase was? Is that the original, yeah, durable all-weather surface? So when he agrees, he's only agreeing with the tuminous concrete. He's not agreeing with the sharpened stone.
Okay, let me look back.
So the original letter from the town engineer sent to the planning commission made a recommendation of bituminous pavement, bituminous concrete, which is...
But there wasn't a term about sharp stone.
And durable, I thought it was durable all-weather surface.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
That was the original wording.
That was on the drawings.
On the drawings.
It's not clear what that means.
Right.
The...
But it was approved.
So that left us with a situation as nobody knows what that means, and the town engineer I think is saying it doesn't matter what. It's like what that driveway should be is hardtop with some drainage improvement.
But they went ahead and made it because of what was agreed to, they were sure.
No.
Do we actually have the engineer's letter here? Uh, 'cause I have the letter from the applicant saying he explained referring to the design engineer. Is this the original?
No.
No, this is the one you've just got, but the original approval by the... So what was the original?
The original recommendation...
Do we have it in writing here?
By the town engineer that Jeff Shea reviewed, that was given to a planning commission, recommended by tuminous concrete.
Okay, we don't have a copy of that though, do we?
Mr. Shea reviewed that today. We had a conversation with Rich Schwitzke, who authored that original letter, who remembered the fact that he recommended to the planning commission to utilize bituminous concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been reviewed by town staff, I don't think I need to have the letter itself.
Right.
And it's referenced in, in Mr. Shea's memorandum to us, that according to the seven fourteen minutes, which would have been of the planning commission, would be construction of both bituminous and common, and gravel, common driveways. Uh, and then they go down to the all-weather surface. From what I see here is the applicant is looking for a clarification of durable all-weather surface, 'cause he says it's vague, and, and so we got our clarification. It should be asphalt.
I'd like to suggest a contrary opinion. I, I agree with Mr. Shea's evaluation, I don't doubt that at all. However, as of the seven fourteen, planning commission, these, these were discussed, they were looking at revised final drawings of June 12th, 2009, so they would have had those drawings in their hand that was prior to the date of seven fourteen. Uh, the final drawings that they would have in their hand indicated shall be pavement or other all-durable surface, being other being non-pavement, and they approved that. They, they did not make a specific comment in, in the section. In the meantime, though, they, ensuing eight years, they have been using this gravel stone, and the, we received a letter from Fleming Farm saying, well, you know, our water supply runs under there, and it's, it's much more costly for us to keep, if it was pavement, to dig that up, and as things happen on a farm, that is not an uncommon occurrence. Part of our P O C D says we encourage small farming, and being a small farmer nowadays is incredibly hard. It's very hard. It's, it's, it's a tribute to the, the people who do it in this town, that they work so hard for what is not the, the, the most extreme monetary rewards that people receive in this town for that kind of work. And so I am in favor of the petitioner saying, well, we, we feel that this is, it's worked, you know, we talk about the erosion, but I don't hear that upon surveying the site that they saw a problem with erosion.
The applicant did not build the driveway according to the plans. Didn't. Took it upon himself to build a driveway, non-compliant with the approved plans associated with the recommended grading, the drainage associated with that grading, and the slope of some of the shoulders of the driveway.
And when you say applicant, are you talking strictly?
The landowner, the landowner who is temporarily occupying the house under a T C O, who is a contractor.
Okay.
You asked Mr. Shea, or the landowner, asked Mr. Shea through you, as the planning commission, for a clarification. Mr. Shea's interpretation of the term durable all-weathered surface in this scenario is bituminous concrete, nothing short of that.
So my question is, so I'm confused, 'cause I don't understand why we're getting letters about this now. Who initiated these letters and why?
When a certificate of occupancy was discussed, our staff, your staff, the town staff, looked at the original conditions as well as the grading associated with the approved plans, and would not sign off.
Okay.
Because it wasn't built the way it was approved.
Wasn't built the way it was approved. The issue of durable all-weather surface also came into play.
So gravel driveway was never approved?
If you, was intended to be a gravel driveway, someone, in my view, with twenty-eight-plus years' experience, would have said pavement or gravel driveway. Durable all-weathered surface is not a common, as Mr. Shea references. It's not industrial standard, you know, there, there's no manual we can go to that says a durable all-weather surface is. So durable all-weather service, in Mr. Shea's opinion, is bituminous concrete, given the evaluation of this particular site and the terminology used.
So can I ask a question?
And again, durable all-weather, there are alternatives to that. Pavers.
Right.
Concrete. It's not just bituminous or asphalt, as Baba said. There, you know, there are other things that are all-weathered and durable, such as concrete or pavers.
So...
Gravel is typically not considered durable and all-weather.
So what, what, what gets me is the, the vague terminology of the approval in 2009. 'Cause it, it says as part of the, it says, so why, why use that durable all-weather surface when it's not even terminology, but that that's what was stated?
In the motion, there was no language like that. That language appears in the drawings.
Only on the drawings.
Only on the drawings.
What, what appears on the drawings?
So what he says is that there was discussion about bituminous concrete and gravel.
Correct.
But the motion didn't make it clear which one they wanted.
Okay.
So it appeared on the drawings, which is a different...
As a note.
It's not just a notation.
Okay, so the final drawings, it says durable, pavement?
Or under other durable all-weather surface was scrawled, written onto the drawings.
By who?
The design engineer.
Okay, so it wasn't, okay, that's what I'm trying to get, because it's confusing.
So this was being approved by the commission to have a gravel driveway.
Thank you for that clarification, 'cause this is confusing. I was like, why is this coming to fruition now? Like, I just didn't...
Well, how does he can't get a C O?
Well, but that's not stated in here.
Well, no.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, that's why I asked the question, 'cause I'm like, why is this coming about now if you got, so now it's clear?
Just to understand that the word final drawings, those were part of the submit, that was part of what the planning commission approved on that day, were those final drawings. Those were already done before the planning commission meeting.
I don't know that that was written before or after that.
Yeah, that's not clear.
The motion, the motion didn't include that.
It doesn't say that the final drawings were...
It would have been about that.
But the final drawings revised before the meeting, June 12th, indicate the proposed common driveway surface shall be pavement or other durable all-weather surface. It doesn't say anything about, anything scrawled in. It says that during that meeting on July 14th, they had that in their hand.
That's a good point.
And they approved.
Yeah.
Without specification.
And Mr. Chairman, based on all of the information reviewed by the town engineer, which included the meeting minutes, which included the correspondence associated with the commission, including site visits to the site, his recommendation is to have you require the applicant or landowner to do the common portion of that driveway. It's a driveway serving three parcels, that that common access be bituminous asphalt, bituminous, sorry, bituminous concrete.
I have a question. I drove up there all of a sudden, saw it all rented out, and looked like it was washing away. There's only one house, I have a series of questions about this, so there's only one house now?
One presently constructed, and two lots approved beyond that first house.
Okay, so does this brickle, Ricky, does he own all three lots?
No.
So whoever builds in the other two, why is he responsible for the common road for the three lots?
Someone is responsible to build the common aspect of this subdivision.
Correct. So shouldn't the owner, developer of that property who got it subdivided maybe into three lots, put the road in before they put the houses?
When you buy a property on a common driveway, you go into that with knowledge and awareness of the fact there are responsibilities for the common portion to be constructed and per the plans.
Actually, Farmer Nevin says in his letter... Well, he's a different property though, correct? No, he's the one that has the lots.
Don't they?
Yeah, he's, he says, when and if I develop lot number two, but he did, he did say the driveway, the current driveway on lot one that's got built varies from the subdivision plan somewhat. I mean, he does go and say that. I mean, and that he said, when and if I develop lot two, I'm aware of, with the required site, how specific plan will need to reflect these changes.
The town engineer says that that driveway should be hardtop. That's what he says.
Yeah, I don't, you know what my issue is, and this is, I, I don't dispute the town engineer, he's, you know, but it just, back in 2009, it left things, I mean, in some ways, you know, I, whatever, but it's just...
So it's a lesson's learned.
Right.
In my...
But, but it, it, anyway, it just, it, it doesn't help us now.
Right. Well, that's why it's here, right? It's, someone considers it ambiguous. In my attempt to educate myself a little bit on trying to determine what may be considered a durable all-weather surface, time and time again, four different types of surfaces came up. It's asphalt, pavers, concrete, and gravel.
Correct.
You know, gravel in four or five different locations, the sources I looked at. So I wouldn't summarily discount a gravel driveway. I'm not sure he has a gravel driveway, okay?
It's a trap rock driveway.
Trap rock, yeah.
What is the difference?
It's quarried stone, in essence, it's manufactured, it's, it's from a quarry operation where the material is blasted, then run through a crusher, gradated, and right now he has probably inch and a quarter to two inch still.
It's pretty rough stuff.
And gravel is not done that way?
Gravel is in essence, fine silt, up to, you can have different grades of gravel. It can be bank one gravel that's just dug out of the ground, and then there are gradations of three-quarter inch gravel, inch and a quarter gravel, there's different gradations according to the amount of grain. So if you start with small marbles to big marbles, down to basically dust. And there's a specific gradation when you're looking at material for the construction industry.
So the main difference is this doesn't have the uniformity in size, or...
The difference is, is it's not a solid product.
And gravel is?
Nope.
No, bituminous is.
Mr. Chairman, from what, what I saw driving by the property as, as well, this, this driveway the way it exists looks like that there was the, the gravel put on that you would normally see during construction site to stabilize the soil while you had equipment in and out as a temporary, you know, road, if you want to call it that, to get, you know, equipment and manpower, et cetera, up to especially this higher location. It's temporary in nature to stabilize the, the ground. This is, this is not a finished driveway in any means, as far as, as far as I can see. And again, it's, it's, it's gravel.
Trap rock.
It crushed, crushed rock.
For clarity, the initial driveway associated with the construction of the home was a tried-and-true gravel, you know, regular dirt driveway, and it has been top dressed with quarry run stone or crusher run stone. So there was a top dressing placed on that original gravel driveway?
So there seems to be another issue too, because then you have the individual driveway going up to the house off the common, what we're calling the common driveway, correct? And that looked a mess also. So is the engineer commenting on that also, or just the comment?
What Mr. Shea is commenting on is the requirement associated with the common access portion of the development. There is a common area or portion, we'll just call it the first five hundred feet of driveway that will be shared by three parcels. Once you break off of that common, you, as a homeowner, are responsible for that. It's not an issue of public access through that common portion. What the town's reviewing with regards to its regulations, the original approval, was the portion that was common.
So the other driveways they mentioned on Shingle Mill, on the same street, that are not paved, they would meet the gravel standards?
We didn't evaluate the other driveways on Shingle Mill. Again, regulations and approval motions by commissions change over time, standards change over time.
I think we, we, let's be just a little cautious on a couple of respects. First, we have the, the issue that's been presented to us is the definition of the, I want to use the right term, is it called?
Pavement or other durable all-weather.
Durable all-weather surface. So any, any conversation regarding how the driveway was constructed relative to standards and drainage, I think is irrelevant right now, although it may be an issue with the town, it's not something that needs to be considered by this commission. So I, I would say that based on the expert opinion of our town attorney, that I'd like to move that we remove the ambigu, I'm sorry, town engineer, we eliminate the ambiguity associated with the term pavement or other durable all-weather surface to, to mean it's expected that it will be a bituminous concrete driveway for the, the common portion of the driveway that serves three lots.
That a motion?
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
So let me just, how do we have to present this, Mr. Rabbit? As a statement, as a definition, as the commission's instruction?
You could, and again, you worded that fairly well in the discussion part of this, but I think what you're being asked is to make a determination that the term durable all-weather surface in this instance relates to an all-weather surface as recommended by the town engineer. surface as recommended by the town engineer, which is bituminous concrete.
Recommended by two town engineers.
Good.
I have another question though, because he brings up this hammerhead turnaround. So, what is that about? Is there wording?
What Mr. Rice had said as chairman, that this determination or interpretation you're making as a commission applies to the common portion of this development, which includes the hammerhead turnaround.
Was a turnaround required initially?
Yes.
Is it the same kind or is it, is he changing that from the original proposal?
Again, you're being passed with the terminology of surface treatment. With regards to compliance with the approved plans, you're not being able to weigh in on that. That's a staff issue of the commission that in order to get certificates of occupancies for the home, home or homes, in order to get that, we will determine compliance with the approved plans. The clarification he's seeking from you this evening is the terminology associated with durable, all-weathered surface. And I think what Mr. Rice stated in a potential motion is that it is the commission's opinion the term durable, all-weathered surface is to be bituminous concrete as recommended by the town engineer in his October 24, 2017 letter.
What's your motion? I'm going to make it a little bit different. Okay, so I move that the Planning Commission rule that the current driveway, that the common portion of the driveway at 18 Shingle Mill Road, consisting of a top layer of one and a quarter by two-inch trap rock, does not satisfy the requirements of a durable, all-weathered surface. And based on the recommendation of the current town engineer and his assessment of previous town engineer's decision is that the actual surface to be used should be bituminous concrete.
Can you repeat what you said about the durable? Because I think even mentioning of durable, it is confusing. So, how did you phrase that again?
Essentially, what I said was what's there is not a durable, all-weathered surface.
Durable, all-weathered surface was required and we're saying what it is.
Yeah, but I think that's what's confusing. So, I don't know if there's any...
Now, first, I want to say what's there is not a durable, all-weathered surface. What would qualify in this case is bituminous concrete.
Does this mean everybody who...
But what I'm saying is that's what's gotten us into difficulty because people are like, what is a durable? Why don't we just say it doesn't meet standards? Do you know what I'm saying?
You can't because there is no standards. So, it's our decision that what's there now is not a durable, all-weathered surface, and the acceptable alternative is bituminous concrete.
Bill, does that mean that all the other lots do not have durable surfaces?
We're not talking about the other lots. Right now, it's the common driveway.
All right. Even though it was discussed during the 2009 meeting and there was no change made to specify that, there was no, at the end of the discussion, it was not said, oh, well, now we better make sure we...
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, okay? Either a second or no second, please.
Oh, sir.
Okay, we have a second. Now, we can discuss it.
Okay. So, we're saying that even though, that during this meeting, there was discussion specifically regarding gravel and pavement, and the decision was to approve the plans as they were without reference to the fact that durable, all-weathered surface had to be, had to be pavement, we went to nine years later, change the meaning of what they approved?
No, and let me, let me just jump in on that. I think what the question, the property owner is asking is for a clarification on that term. And we were providing a clarification on that term that was written on his report, on his drawings, final drawings of that date. We're not going back and questioning that other panel.
Right.
We're making a determination exactly like we were asked. What does this mean? Well, we found out that it doesn't really mean anything, so our town engineer has come out and said, this is, even though it's not a standard industry term, this is what we expect here.
But these were not drawings that were made after the meeting. These were drawings that were made prior to...
Understood. It really isn't part of the question.
No, that's already, you know, a decision or occurrences that happened that led to the ambiguity. So, we can't go back and change the drawings from 2009.
But we can go back and change the interpretation of the drawings.
We are making a ruling on what the definition is.
Isn't it this simple? We're being asked if his driveway qualifies as durable, all-weathered surface.
Yes, that's...
But it's really all written.
I think the motion says it does not qualify.
And that's what Bill's motion clearly says. It does not qualify.
Do you want me to read it back?
That's what his question is to us.
Correct. Do you want me to read it back?
Yeah, please.
I think I have.
Is that the Planning Commission rules that the common portion of the current driveway at 18 Shingle Mill Road, consisting of a top layer quarter-inch trap rock, does not satisfy the requirements of an all-weather durable surface, and based on the recommendations of the current town engineer and assessment of previous engineers, that the actual surface should be bituminous asphalt?
Did you say asphalt or concrete?
Or what did you say? I would have...
Bituminous concrete.
Concrete.
Any further discussion?
I just have one dumb question.
No dumb ones.
Where is the, I have the letters. I have the town engineer. Where is the request as to what we're answering to?
So...
Where is the request for, or to make a decision on something?
That was right here.
Okay. Okay, so I've got that letter and I've been reading it considerably, but, and I had read it considerably. Where is, I'm just seeing, where is the request worded? I haven't found it.
Is it his?
Please, please clarify.
It's the one, two, fourth from the...
One, two, three, four.
Fourth paragraph from the bottom.
To decide if our driveway is acceptable to the spirit of the approval. The approval was in July of 2009. And they discussed gravel, they discussed pavement, and they approved it without specifying that it had to be pavement, even though they were looking at those drawings.
I think that's a true statement.
So, I, I know, I have to tell you, I don't, I think their driveway is acceptable to the spirit of the approval, where the approval would have said no, not to do that.
Well, it's not just the question that the letter poses. It's that they can't get a C O because they aren't meeting the requirements for the driveway. None of that matters. Is this driveway a durable, all-weathered surface? That's really the question.
And my motion explains that it is not. Okay?
Given that you mentioned pavers, could also be an option, but the engineer, town engineer, does not say that. But in Ricky's letter, he mentions the fact of not wanting to have water flowing and going off the land.
I think they reference drainage in that, in the letter from the town engineer as well. It's part of the driveway construction.
Right, they say reasons for not paving, and that was one of them. So, would it be appropriate for us to also suggest paving stone as a possibility or not?
I don't think...
Because once we say only bituminous concrete, that's it, basically. They don't have other options.
That's a good point. That's a very good point.
I think based on the comments from the town engineer, I think bituminous concrete is the solution.
But that can include pavers?
That's not pavers, no.
That's not pavers.
What was the, somebody, what was, you looked it up. There were four things.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but...
Four things discussed.
The town engineer did not mention pavers.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I want to address a point that two letters made. And I'm not an expert on roads, but they both talk about far better traction than the smooth surface of pavement. Is that not true or is that true?
I grew up with a gravel driveway as a kid. It's not true. I still see my father in the winter spinning his wheels.
Well, you can see that at my house on the bituminous pavement as well. It was steep driveway.
Still, the issue is, does his driveway meet that definition, even though it was never defined or going to do that?
Okay, so all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, so we had one, two, three, four. Erin, you were the aye. Five ayes and one nay. That was how we...
Six ayes. Five ayes, you're right.
Good discussion, everybody. That was very well thought out. Appreciate all the different points of view. Okay, that's the end of our agenda. Mr. Rabbit, any correspondence or any other comments from town staff?
No correspondence for you this month. Just a quick update. We're working with Glenn Childler on the printing of the P O C D. We've done a few mockups. We're waiting for our last mockup of the P O C D so we can finalize price and get that printed for you.
Great. Likely by next meeting? Nay.
Again, we have to have a digital copy of O P M by November 1st, and we have to have a copy filed with the town clerk by November 1st also. So, we will have a document filed with the town clerk. Depending on the shipment of certain papers to the printer, we're working hard to meet that deadline.
Digital copies always available.
Anything else?
Nothing more to add, Mr. Chairman.
We already, we already... Okay, I'll enter it. Team, a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes in hours lead.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.